Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order our April 28th work session. Thank you for those who are joining us remotely. Good to see those that are back from NLC. So, how you doing, Councilman? All right, item 2.0 is invocation. Bishop and Honorable Reverend Wright, you would like to...
Yes. Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come to you to first say thank you. Thank you for all that you do, how you watch over us, our great city and our residents. Bless this meeting tonight. God, as we come to you for guidance and wisdom and direction. Move by the power of your anointing. Bless your people and leadership in the name of your Son, in whom we love the most. Amen.
Amen. Item 3.0 is the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, ungod, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 3.0 is the proof of the agenda. Before we go... All right, Councilman Dox is quick on the switch, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, those in favor, show of hands. We'll do hands. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those voting. This is for Jennifer and the IT, I guess, the communications folks. So, this is video live. This is our work session. It's video live. I know we talked about when we first got back in chambers, making this available. So, is that right, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, this is on GTBA.
All right.
And it means it's also... I'm sorry.
It means it's also then broadcast on YouTube.
Okay.
And we are also zooming for the councilmembers who aren't here as well.
Historical work session via television. As transparent as I can see. All right, item 4.1, discussion on issuance of the GO bond. Mr. Tolan?
Sir, I'll take that before we have him come up. I want to thank the council for agreeing to the work session tonight. As you know, we received a significant amount of funding from the federal government over the last couple of years. Most recently, we were awarded some $40 million in ARPA funds. But despite all of the federal money that we have and the very careful financial planning that we do here as the city, we find that we have capital needs which far out exceed our ability to fund. Namely, we had identified several years ago some almost $90 million of public safety needs. We have needs for infrastructure if the council wants to continue on the trajectory of when we... A couple of years ago, we were at a 40-year repaving cycle. We've changed the methodology, but this past year with an infusion of cash from fund balance, we were down to 16 to 18 years of a cycle to be able to repave our streets. And in order for us to continue that movement that we've had on infrastructure, as well as to address the significant public safety unfunded needs, and not to mention potentially any housing, affordable housing issues that the council wishes to take, we would need a different... We would need a different funding method. And what we wanted to talk to you tonight about was general obligation bonds. The council is very familiar with those. That is how we funded all of the parks and recreation improvements with the $35 million GO bond referendum that was passed several years ago. And tonight, Assistant City Manager Jay Tolan will walk you through what it would look like if the council decides to put this issue before the voters. And I think that's a very significant distinction to make about this capital funding methodology, is that you would put it on the ballot for the voters to tell you yes or no, particularly it relates to the public safety and infrastructure issues. But Jay will cover that into some greater detail. But before we begin on that, I'd also like to say that we are knee-deep in finalizing the recommended budget for your consideration later in May. But I'm happy to report that with all of the hard work of the departments, and again, careful financial planning, that there will not be a tax rate increase proposed in my budget that I'll present to you in May. There will not be an increase proposed in the budget for transit, solid waste, or stormwater. We have been using the federal money that we receive very prudently, and we have been trying to address another significant issue that we have in city's organization. That is having competitive wages and benefits. And so what you'll see in my recommended budget that you'll get in May is that we are basically saving as many of our coins as we can to try to fund the wage and salary needs that we have to address in order to attract and retain a qualified staff. But I'll say it again, the recommended budget you'll get in May does not include a tax rate increase or an increase in the fees for solid waste, transit, or stormwater at this time. So with that, may I be happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to Assistant City Manager Tolan?
Okay. Okay, do have a couple councilmen here, and then I have a question.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. City Manager, and I like hearing that there's no additional tax increase. And I know it's going to be explained tonight by our assistant manager, but whenever we talk about these type things, as far as referendums, bond referendums, or whatever they may be that go before the citizens, are we going to market and explain well what the referendum is and what it will cost them? Because we're not calling it a tax, and that's great, but there's going to be something. There's an amount that they're going to be paying.
Yes, sir.
So, we need to let people know what that means.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct.
And I had that conversation today. Somebody would say, "Oh, y'all get ready to do this?" Or...
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct. And again, you have the experience of being on council when this issue has come up before about how we fund significant capital projects, and you are correct. So, what it would look like is if the council gave the nod to say, "We want to put this issue before the voters." And again, again, make that huge distinction. You would put this on the ballot for the voters to decide whether they are willing to pledge the full faith and credit of the city of Fable to pay back these bonds. So, the voters would be able to give us their say on it. If they say yes, then of course, we would have to raise the tax rate to honor the debt payments that the bond would generate. So, it was just as it was with the Parks and Recreation Bond referendum. When we went out for the $35 million of GO bonds that were authorized by a referendum, I think it was in 2016, we at that time had projected that the tax rate to support that was 1.35 cents, but I think now that's 1.42 cents to service that. And that is added on to the tax rate. But that again is only if the council says we want to put it on the ballot, and only then if the voters say we want to approve it. So again, I think it gives the council full authority, and it also gives the voters and taxpayers in the city of Fable the authority as well to tell us if that's something they want us to do in these areas.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hare. So, Mr. Tolan, you can come up. I think, you know, I have some more specific questions. I think City Manager did a great job explaining the difference. And for people who may be viewing this just so they understand, you know, they say, "Hey, well, they got all this money from Recovery Act funds. They've heard us talk about 41, 42 million." These projects, explain the difference. So, that is a one-time infusion from the government for recovery.
Correct.
The reason you... These projects need recurring dollars because... So, you can't really use one-time money for recurring bills. Is that right? Can you kind of explain that a little bit?
That's correct. And then the projects that we have in here tonight are... We have already identified other projects so the city can use the money from the one-time money for, such as community, housing, economic vitality, things of that nature. So, it's not like we're going to take these projects or this amount here and then supplant it with the ARPA money. This is additional needs outside of that. And I think it's important, if I could take one step back, to kind of strike while the iron's hot. If the voters approve it in November, the council wouldn't actually raise taxes until that next fiscal year, right? Because you wouldn't raise taxes now because you don't know if the referendum is going to pass. Then it passes, then that next year, you'd raise taxes to support this.
And just to be clear for people who are catching this by television, so basically, if the voters pass this, if it goes on the ballot, they are able to break this down individually. So, someone may support one part of this, but not another part. So, it may be public safety is the thing that I support, but I may not vote for stormwater or... I mean, for infrastructure.
Infrastructure. That's right. That's correct. There'll be separate... Each, by general statute, each kind of type is into its own question. So, it's like, just like you said, public safety would be one question, yes or no. Infrastructure would be yes or no, and so on.
Okay. And the last thing I'll have before I let you get your presentation, I think we did have a councilman here for a follow-up. If there was... I know it used to be one cent was equated to 1.35 million roughly, something like one cent.
1.45 million.
1.45, okay. So, the average house, if you have a $100,000 house, or, you know, a $160,000 house, what does that mean in extra dollars?
So, on a $200,000 house, if you raise the tax rate a penny, it would be $20 a year additional.
$20 a year?
On a $200,000 house, on one penny.
Yeah, so roughly a dollar fifty a month, roughly, a dollar sixty a month. Okay, $20 a year is one cent.
That's correct, on a $200,000 house.
Okay, all right. Okay, Councilman Hare?
Yes, sir. Just a follow-up, Mayor, because you hit a point. So, when we look at the CARES Act funding, when we look at the rescue funding, when we look at the resources from the state budget, I'm trying to see... I know we want to allocate those things for other places. I'm just trying to... Because I'm still thinking about that increase amount that we're talking about, the tax-raising amount. So, with the CARES Act, with the rescue funding, with the state, any kind of... In from the state, we still wouldn't be in a place to do what we are trying to do? I mean, can you kind of explain that, or is that going to be a part of your presentation?
Well, I can explain it now. So, when you look at the CARES Act, we have spent most of our CARES Act funds today. So, that...
You mean, we've identified things that we want to do? We don't want to...
CARES Act.
Oh, CARES Act, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then ARPA is where you're going, Mayor, with... Yeah, we've identified things. We've talked about during the CIP-TIP, we've already identified the first tranche, which is 20 million. When we did the CIP-TIP conversation, we showed you where we could leverage that other 20 million mainly in the stormwater infrastructure piece and hope for federal grants that we could do the match with that ARPA fund with to create, let's say, take 20 million and create 100 million with other federal grants. And we had that conversation. This... These infrastructure here, which is sidewalks, streets repaving, and then public safety, that really hasn't been in the conversation except for things that are unfunded.
But, sir, we also are going to be able to hopefully identify for you the needs as identified as the public safety, as well as for some of the infrastructure in the presentation in just a moment.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Tolan, please.
Okay, thanks.
I'll hold back.
All right, so, kind of bottom line up front, if we would like to get a referendum on the November ballot, we need to take official action at the May 9th meeting. And so that would look like a preliminary resolution, and it'd be the authorization for the city to file with the local government commission, which is a Department of the State Treasurer. What we would need with that resolution, we would need a not-to-exceed amount, which just say, just using round numbers, is $100 million. And then we would need to know the types or the questions that would be on the ballot. So, let's just stick with 100 million, and we'll stick with public safety and infrastructure. So, when that preliminary resolution, council would pass that. Now, as we went up, went through the process up to about August or September-ish, you all could lower that amount. You could only issue $50 million if that was your pleasure, and you could only do public safety if that was your pleasure. But as we go throughout the process, we cannot raise the amount, and we cannot add another question. So, this is why this meeting was so important, was to establish that we would bring to you, once you all, if you all give us consensus, on May the 9th, we'd bring to you this preliminary resolution that would be laid out, with this not-to-exceed amount by type and which type. So, I want to pause there to make sure, to make sure there's any questions.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, so, this bond, it will cover a number of different items we're looking at in the city. So, we haven't given you an opportunity to do the presentation yet, so it may... My question may be in there. So, we're talking stormwater. We don't want to... I don't want to get too deep in there, but stormwater is not a part of this item.
Not this particular presentation. There's no stormwater items here.
Okay. That was just a question.
And stormwater is not in here because it has its own revenue source.
Source, yeah.
So, it wouldn't need to be any additional.
You could actually issue what's called revenue bonds. That would be probably a more appropriate way. That way, the people who benefit would also be the people who pay.
Got you.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Okay, so, as we have been talking, this has been a continuation from a conversation started last year. There's pressure on the capital improvement plan and issuing some debt. With an enhancement in revenue would help relieve the pressure. So, remember, that would be the cue to enhance the revenue would be in fiscal year end '23, and then the actual revenue enhancements would be in fiscal year end '24. So, whenever you look to issue debt, there's four really important things to consider. You know, what is allowed under state statutes? What's the interest rate? What's the asset to be pledged? Sometimes when you issue debt, like, we'll talk about Fire Station 4, which has already been before y'all, and we just put that out to bid. But for that one, we didn't do a GO bond. We're just doing an installment financing, which is another way to borrow money, but we're actually mortgaging that fire station. And then we'll talk about the approvals needed. So, the least expensive way, as far as interest rate goes to issue debt, is through a general obligation bond. And as you all know, it requires a voter referendum, and like we've covered, there's one question per purpose. Like Mr. Hewitt said, any available revenues can be used for repayment. The timing with the increase of revenues, so like I said, the voters would vote in fiscal year end '23. The increase would need to come in fiscal year end '24. The general obligation bonds does not require collateral, so we wouldn't be putting a mortgage on any of our assets, and like I said, it has the lowest interest rate. So, some other options are installment financing or LOBs. That's what we did for the baseball stadium and the parking deck. Or you can cash fund projects, which when we talked about the CIP-TIP, it takes a substantial amount of time to cash fund projects because you have to save all the money up, and then you can spend it. Okay, now, this is kind of... This is the meat and potatoes of it. So, if you were to raise the property tax one cent, you could fund $25.4 million in debt, right? Two cents, $50.6 million, and so on, all the way up to five cents would be $127.1 million. And so, we would look to... For the corresponding tax rate increase, we could bring, fund all the projects starting in fiscal year '26. As you know, it'd be difficult, if we did 127 million, it'd be difficult for the city to do them all at one time, but we would have the money available to start the soft costs and then move those in a kind of quick and efficient manner. So, I'll pause here, see if there's any questions, comments. Okay? All right, so, we use five plans basically to compile this list, public safety, sidewalks, bicycle, pedestrian, street resurfacing plans. And then, as I said, next steps is to kind of give consensus to us tonight. We'll work with Bond Council, the Charleston Group, to do that preliminary resolution. It'd be May 9th. And then, as I said, we'd set the ceiling and the amount and purposes that cannot be lowered as we go through. So, before I go to the projects, I kind of wanted to pause because the whole list of projects is $111 million. If that's not the council's pleasure, we can go through the projects tonight, but we would need to go back and prioritize which projects we would fit within the amount that council's pleasure.
Well, I think, and that's a great, great point. I think what was helpful last time, council, those, when we talked about it before, was we talked through it to see what a ceiling was, not to exceed. And with the Parks and Rec, I think that amount was 35 million. We would not go above 35 million. The next part of the conversation, we worked toward what projects fit under that cap. Trying to do it in reverse was a little difficult, to say, "I want this project, but I don't want that one," and how much is the total, and taking projects on and off. So, I guess the first point of action would be, as we look through this, and this is all again, would be voter approved, so if they passed it, that means that they were okay with the increase. Which one of these scenarios, I guess Mr. Tolan can kind of go through some of the examples of recommendations. I certainly don't think, you know, we needed to do nine fire stations at a time, so we can do some of this in phases. But which one of these dollar amounts, I guess, we needed to start the conversation with, you know, what we want to do? But, Mr. Tolan, you want to proceed with each section explanation? Or, council, you've been able to... I think for the people viewing, it may be good to go through each section. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. And you may not have what I'm going to ask tonight, but I would like to have it, and if you would, share it with all of council. I would like to know, over the last... Over the last maybe 10 years, what bonds like this are in place that citizens are still paying on, and what were the costs, or what are their costs if they're still paying on? For example, I assume they're still paying on the Parks and Rec bond.
I think, yeah, I think... I'll double-check. I think it's only the Parks and Rec bond.
Yeah, okay.
But I'll double-check.
Yeah, but just give me those numbers.
Yes, sir.
Because that'd help me with what, as we look at these new proposed proposals.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to simplify that, one of the questions that was asked earlier, but to make sure for the listening audience that it's clear. So, when you gave the example that the 1.45 percent on a home, I believe it was 160,000, you said it would be $20 increase?
Well, I did it on 200,000 because it's easier. Because you divide it by 100, and then you multiply it by one penny, and that's how you get the tax rate.
Okay, so what I'm trying to clarify is, if there is six items that they... That the citizens can choose from, what is the highest amount of taxes that would be calculated for them if they chose all... Let's say if all six of them passed?
Well, we can publish that. I don't believe that it would say on the ballot the tax rate. It would just say the amount, and then we would need to total that amount. And, you know, Mr. Hewitt and I talked about this. We can do all the education in the world. So, we can... Let's say if there's... I'm not... This is not in this presentation, but let's say there's four categories, and then they're $25 million apiece, and that would be 100 million. And then that would be like your four cents, right? So, then we can publish that all day long. And then, but the voter, and we can do different scenarios. So, like, if they voted for one and three, which was 50 million, that would equal this. But on the ballot itself, it will not say that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. That's why I wanted to just make sure that it was clear.
It'll just say the amount of... Because sometimes when you do GO, maybe you don't need to raise taxes. Each municipality is different, and that's... I think that's why it just doesn't list the tax rate. It just lists the amount of the bonds, and then it's on the municipality to communicate what that looks like for its constituents.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so, he's going to go through the sections.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. And then, as I said, this is no... These items are not prioritized. So, just because Fire Station 16 is the first one, it doesn't mean that it's first. We just... Okay, all right, so then, you have...
Mayor Protim has a question real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry. I'm just trying to put everything into perspective, especially for our audience out there. So, what you said, if we raise it one cent on a $200,000 home, it's $20 a year that would be raised. So, if we went up to four cent, we are looking at $80 a year on a $200,000 home.
That's right.
And then, if we went to five cent, we're looking at $100 on a $200,000 home.
Right, on top of their existing tax.
Yes, yes, but that's what it will cost if we do one cent. It's basically $20 more if your home is $200,000 or more, or less. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Tolan?
All right, so, you see here, Fire Station 16 would be construction. Then you see two items for Fire Station 2, which would be a relocation and land acquisition. That's over on Olive Street. It's typo there, sorry about that. Fire Station 9 would be a reconstruction, 9.4 million. Fire Station 20 would be new, 7.5 million. The logistics building, that site has yet to be determined, would be 2.1 million. And then you have renovations to Fire Station 3, 6, 7, 11 for 19.2 million. Then Fire Station 18 would be land and temporary station for 550,000, and then a police department call center for 911 at 31.1 million. And so, those total, I believe they total 85 million.
All right, you have a question, Mr. Tolan. Councilmember Wright?
86 million.
Yeah, so, concerning the fire stations, how was these fire stations picked? And, you know, you talked about the priority already, whether, you know, when the work's going to be done. But when you look at the city and fire stations are strategically placed in different areas of the city and, you know, districts per se, is this covering the whole city, or is this a need? And who came up with the list of these priorities? And is this spread it equally across the board when you're talking about the protection when it comes to fire across the city and every district?
Yes, sir. Chief Hill?
I'll get on that quick.
Yeah. But, yeah, Jay was getting ready to introduce Chief Hill as well.
Good evening. This list is the priorities of what we see at this time to provide coverage for the entire city. But keep in mind, this list isn't new. This is the same list that's been in our CIP for decades. I presented this listing to this council before, and the two previous fire chiefs have presented these same projects at one time or another, you know, during the course of their tenure. There's other needs. There's other projects out there, but these are, we feel like are the most significant needs of the data. We're looking at it this time.
Okay, thank you.
And, Council, just want to recall, a number of these projects came out of studies and reports that were done. There was a fire safety study. I know we got, what is it, ISO rating?
Yes, sir.
Which was the, you know, we have one of the highest ratings in the country, really. But we had a study that showed us where we were deficient, and some of the builders need to be upgraded. They were not capable of having dual, you know, male and female quarters. Some were not placed, and there was some lack of coverage areas for response time. So, there's a study. It may be helpful for, maybe Mr. Manager, if someone can send us that study to look back over. Same thing with the, as we start talking about infrastructure. We've been doing a lot of studies. We just didn't have the funding to execute. So, just, that may be helpful, good read of it, but thank you, Chief.
Yes, yes.
Now, Chief, I did have a question for you on the logistics of that. Now, moving around the city, was able to take a ride with the PD and to see kind of where some of the precincts are located? And, Chief, talk to the manager about this. How, if there were new stations built that were placed in coverage safety areas, were able to build quarters on there where they could share some space with PD? Because some of the neighborhoods in the community feel a little better when they know there's a police... It's not really a substation, but it would be a fire station with a component to it that had capability for the PD. Have you seen anything like that with these new fire stations?
Well, we're more than willing.
Yeah, we do, man.
Talking to Chief... Oh, sorry. The Chief Hawkins about that. We just want to know geographically where we're needing fire stations is exactly where she's needing the substations.
The only one that can be co-existent would be the call center. And I know that, but that would be a precinct that would be like the call center, training center, where police department employees exist. Right now, trying to make sure there's a precinct in East District, and it would be, we haven't looked at it, to expand any more precincts, because expanding precincts costs more.
Well, I wouldn't look for expansion. Let's say for Sycamore Dairy, and then the fire station that's being proposed is on Bryant Boulevard as well, within probably, what, three quarters of a mile?
Yeah, that would be... We haven't looked at it, and we would have to look at adding on to what already exists.
So, wouldn't say that plus that. I'm just saying, you know, you could consolidate possibly.
Moving it to...
Yeah, if you were in a close proximity like that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I can answer for the chiefs on that. The... The, there are any number of ways to create space at the fire stations for us to have a community room or offices. I mean, I think it's stationed, the one at Langdon Street. You know, Council is very specific about putting rooms in there that could be used for the community. And if it is the council's interest, which it is, and it's also the police's interest, police department's interest, to be in the community, we could definitely stage any of those facilities to also function as a place where the police could hold, could work with Community Watch, or even so many days a week could have someone stationed there. I think that the police department already uses the stations if they're out and about and need to... So, but your point is a good one, Mayor. And we would look at that critically, but right now, where the fire department needs the stations, we have not had an opportunity to really overlay that with where, in five years, the police department's precincts, which are rented right now, may be located. So we can definitely accommodate that as well.
Yeah, we've done that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Chiefs. All right, Ms. Tolan, you're moving on to infrastructure. Area that I'm really interested in, sidewalks, hear that a lot from citizens.
All right, so here's your list of infrastructure. This is approximately $25 million. So you have 7.3 million in 14.5 miles of sidewalks. Intersection improvements for 800,000 from the bike plan. We got four areas for bike lanes, 450K. Then street repaving, pavement preservation, 14.7 million. And then you can see the statistics there for 63 miles or 109 miles, depending on which, which method you chose. And then we would need to have an additional management cost to manage these projects for four-year delivery at about 1.75 million.
Got a question.
All right, Councilman Wright?
Okay. One of the pet peeves of mine is intersection improvement. And I've been talking about this for years. And I've heard from people that come into the city that's visiting relatives, and maybe new people that's becoming homeowners to live here, that it's hard to get around until they kind of understand the streets and things of that nature. But the intersections, I think we need to improve. One of those improvements need to be visible signs, very visible, so people can know. Because the name of the streets change almost every two miles or whatever amount. And so it's very confusing. So I think we need to really spend money, and I think it's going to be more than 800 grand. At the end of the day, when you look at the improvements that need to be done, identifying the roads, naming the roads, putting, you know, really good signs and hanging them within the intersections. And if you go to other cities, you'll see the improvements. And I think we need to really step up our game when it comes to improving our intersections and giving people a really good view of the streets and directions, so they can easily get around. And I've seen that's been a challenge in the past for a lot of people. I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tolan, so sidewalks, and this may be a Mr. Hewitt question, I know you're the money man, but he, it may know. We've done some cash infusions in increasing the sidewalk, and we have one coming up. I think it was what, $6 million coming up in the coming years. So 7.3, I remember we did a sidewalk study that showed we were about $15 million behind from connecting the city like it should be. Is 7.3 the balance to complete that plan? Do you know if that's the case? I know we've been incrementally trying to cash fund some of it.
One second. Lee or Sheila? And Sheila, you can come on down front, you and Rob. That way you don't have so far to walk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hey, sir.
Short answer, no, sir. That would not complete everything. It was about 20 million to complete the pedestrian plan. We've accomplished a lot of that, so it's not a total 20 million deficit. But this, in front of you tonight, would not...
Do you know how much is left?
It would, it would fund everything with some additional stuff through the FY '26 CIP. This proposal here.
Okay, so some of this is baked into the outward year CIPs, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
But if we did a bond, that would be a funding source for that. So what happens to where that's programmed in, in the CIP already?
Well, that would allow the council to do is to reprioritize some projects which are unfunded at the moment.
Okay.
Jay, come to the microphone if you could. And we had word from folks that we need to speak into the microphones as well, if they're not turned on, as well.
You know, so some of these, this would accelerate these projects because then you have the projects that are out even farther would come even closer.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if we wanted to check the box on the sidewalk pedestrian plan, it said we were the least walkable city in the country a couple of years ago. So we've, we've put some emphasis into fixing that. But if you're going to do a bond and take it to the voters, and if they choose to pass it, what does it take for us to check the box on this study? Which, last thing you want to do is go not get enough to complete something so that you can at least check the box on that particular study.
Yes, sir. And we've been checking some boxes since we got the study.
Right.
And this is just, is our proposal. So if 7.3 of that 25 is not council's desire, we could say...
No, I'm saying, do you know right off how much of the $20 million plan is remaining after this?
No, sir, I do not, off the top of my head. Because a lot of that included infrastructure that'll be installed by DOT, you know, in a partnership as a part of one of their projects.
How do we get to that, and how do we back into that number? That way you have a true number that we're asking the voters to consider.
I would have to go back and bring that back to council.
All right. Next, last question I have is the intersection improvement plans that Councilmember Wright was talking about. Are those state?
No, sir.
Those are all city roads?
Proposals that we mentioned five here, they would be city, city on city roads. They'd be city on traffic signals. They would not be DOTs, no, sir.
Okay. And the, have we looked, do we have a plan? Now, what I do here, if you try to get from this side of town on East Fairville to West Fairville at 5:00 in the afternoon, so connectivity, do we, do we have a plan that shows us how to move around? I know 295 helps some, and I know those are things that you plan in the outward years. But when is the last time we did an actual plan that showed how we accommodate the growth that we've had? There are more people, more cars, and more people coming and going. So how, I haven't seen any, any, any plan that I can remember that addresses that.
Yes, sir. Normally, the jurisdiction that completes that type of planning effort is FAMPO. And they are actually in the process now of updating that.
Okay.
Portion of that plan is called the Congestion Management Plan, CMP. And they're in the process of updating that now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Kingston?
Thank you, Mayor. For clarity, if it says, for example, bike plan for areas, in the education portion, are we going to specify what each area that you're looking at doing the improvements on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Again, another question on the study. We did a bike plan study. How does this 450 play into that? Just a portion of it, a fraction of it, or?
We've not received any funding to implement any portions of the bike plan to a large scale to this point. So this would begin that process.
Do you remember how much that?
No, sir. It's in the tens of millions.
Okay. All right, Councilman Wright?
I just have a question on the street paving and pavement preservation. I know we're doing quite a bit of street paving now, or the slurry in different areas. And just want to mention, to talk to the citizens that may be watching because there are some concerns about how the company is, you know, putting down the slurry. And can you just go over, because we're having some issues with some pedestrians in some of my communities that are hot about the way it looks initially. But they said that they put down a first layer and then come back with a final layer. Is that something that?
It depends on the treatment method. If it's the Cape seal, they do do that first layer and then come back and do the slurry layer on top of that sometime after.
Well, absolutely necessary because in Hollywood Heights, I hope that they're going to come back and do that second layer because it looks absolutely ate up.
We confirm that that is the first stage, and it will be coming back to do the top coat.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right.
Councilman here.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could stay on that point, please, just for a moment. Those same concerns, and I've sent some, I've sent a couple of emails out trying to get some response back. Hadn't received it, received it yet. I know it's on the way. But in the Corn Bowl community and in the Green Valley community, I've sent out a couple of emails about, I guess it's a gravel concrete type mix, and it doesn't have a slurry or any form of pavement on it, unless it's been paved since I sent the emails in. But there's a...
Well, Council, what we can do, it seems like there's a lot of questions about this again. We can definitely program this for an upcoming work session to talk about the different treatments that we do. The one that I think you're talking about is almost like a marble that it turns into a top surface when you roll it out. But we can, we can definitely do that and come back and talk to you about that. But the...
I understand, I understand. If I would have gotten my response back, I would, I would be okay for tonight on that.
Yes, sir.
So Council, as we bring it in, tonight is about the bond.
Right, right.
So we're running kind of on a tight deadline about the bond. So what we probably need to know, Mr. Manager, if I'm not mistaken, and I know we will begin, probably need a whole nother meeting to work through what projects fit and how much to allocate to each section. But tonight, do we need the ceiling? Or do you need, how much is spent on each section?
Well...
What is the question that has to be on the May 9th?
Well, one of the, one of the things I think that we had identified, and I'm not sure, Jay, if it's actually in the presentation, those four questions that I could never remember what the ones were, the kind of priorities that we talked about. Yeah, so the first one is, we want consensus from council that this is something that you want to address, and that we need to bring you something on May 9th. You know, if there's not consensus that there's something here, here, that you want to act on, then that kind of stops. So that would be really the first consensus that I would ask to council is, is have we, is there a compelling case that we need to do something as it relates to offering a geo-bond referendum to our voters?
Okay. Dollar amounts, you do not need that tonight?
I will need that, but that's only if the first question is positive.
Right, of course. All right. So Council, question before us is based on presentation and the conversation regarding the needs. Need kind of a consensus to see if this is something that we would like for them to prepare for.
Second.
All right. So it's mostly by Councilmember Dawkins seconding it, by consensus mostly seconding it by Councilmember Wright? Discussion on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jones, you had a question?
You're on mute, sir.
You're on mute, Councilmember Jones. Can you repeat that? Hold on one second, they're trying to work through. Okay. Can you hear, was it thumbs up for the consensus, or was it for the chicken ears? Oh. Okay. So did you still have a question? Consensus, okay. All right. So, all right. So those in favor, show of hands, consensus? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Banks McGuffin?
My question is, as far as the sidewalks, all the different improvements, have we identified those areas?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I need to move this thing, it's on. I guess my question is, as far as the different projects and improvement, have we identified each area? Like, prime example, like the bike plan or the sidewalks, have we identified?
Yeah, there's specific projects that lead up to these numbers.
Okay. And will we be able to see that, get that information?
I've asked them to send us the sidewalk plan and the bike plan. Just so council can read up on it, if you, if you, you know, it's good to brush up on.
And we still, and if the, and if the ceiling, the 111 is not the pleasure, then we still need to prioritize.
Yeah. Well, we're going to need to prioritize. I'm not sure the ceiling's going to be quite that high.
Okay.
Yeah. But we'll, we'll see. All right. So Council, any other questions? Those in favor of preparing to move this forward to bring back for a meeting, show of hands? Councilman Jones showed his thumb and said he was agreeing. So Madam Clerk, so Mr. Manager, I guess by May 9, on or before, as soon as possible because these studies were kind of detailed?
Yes, sir. And so, absolutely get that for you. One of the things that is on the next slide that Jay also has, or subsequent one, is that one of the things that we're seeing is that all of our construction projects are costing a lot more than what we'd originally budgeted. We have, I think it's a 30% increase that we saw in Station 4?
Or, and the senior center.
And the senior center. And so one of the things that we would want to be very transparent with the public and share with council tonight is that while we look at the list that's on the screen right now in front of you, where we anticipate that we'd be able to do 14.5 miles of sidewalks for $7.3 million. If in two years that number goes up, the cost, then you would have to reduce that as well. And so that's why we would also prioritize all of the other improvements that you see on the infrastructure list as well. Because some of them may require coordination for us to acquire rights of way, or it might allow us to do partnerships. So what you're really agreeing to, you're telling the voters, these are the projects that we would like to do, but you're really telling them we're going to borrow up to this amount of money. Because some of this could change. And we'll actually be coming back to council for a request to do a public hearing to expand the debt ceiling on the fire station on Fort Bragg, on Bragg Boulevard. I think that the total cost now is probably closer to 10 to 11. Yeah. But we'll be coming back to you that very soon.
And that's a key point, and this gives an authorization for future councils up to seven years for borrowing it. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you can, the city's going to go out and borrow it now, but when, as rates are favorable, you know, and you anticipate cost of construction may go up.
Yes, sir.
Like you said, then they just have the authorization is all this voters for.
Then, and you can, you know, let's just, if it's 100 million, the future councils, they don't have to borrow 100 million.
Right.
The only thing that sticks is the type, right? So if I check yes to public safety, all that money has to be used on public safety.
Right. Okay.
So Mayor, I think the next question to ask was how does the council want to back into an upper ceiling amount? Looking at what Mr. Tolan shared, we can always go down, but when May 9th, when we start the official process, you need to be up here, and then we can whittle it down. And we actually have a schedule that would require a few meetings or some type of interaction with council in July. And we may be able to do those meetings via Zoom or something else like that to accommodate different schedules.
And when?
In July.
When?
It's a very aggressive schedule to get it on for the ballot.
Seven on the approved calendar that we voted on in January.
The, and so the recommendation that I have is that you start higher, and then you work your way down. But I'm not sure what your tolerance for high is. But I would say this, that if we look at the 911 center, which I think is a must, particularly if you go upstairs and take a look at the requirements that we have. If that is in and of itself is about $30 million, and we would of course try to get funding from other sources to help offset that cost. But if that is 30, if that is a $30 million ask, and each fire station, new construction is 10 million, that alone, just for the public safety part right there, if you were to do a fire station, 911 combo or ELC or something, you're close to $50 million just right there for public safety. Then I think that there were a lot of nods on the infrastructure that Jay said totaled on this page to 25 million. And council may wish to say, we would like to dig in and do more on infrastructure. So I mean, I think already there, you're settled at about 75.
That's, that's if Christmas came early. But I'm saying that there's a lot of things that I think, Council, that we need to consider, whether there's options to be able to collaborate. You know, the county's completing their 911. I know that conversation kind of got derailed at one time, but does that building have the capability to accommodate, is there an outfit possibility? So there's a lot of discussion with that. I think what's helpful, and even if we have meetings in between, we have a work session meeting May 3rd. When can we get the information on these plans? Because that's critical before we decide it. Because if the sidewalk plan says you need another 10 million, then, you know, we may have to make some adjustments to the recommended amount, or if it's less, you know. So when, when can we get the plans? And do you have space on, well, I know May 3rd was kind of crowded.
May 2nd.
May 2nd was kind of crowded.
It is. But again, for this, we can definitely send those out, and we'll hope to have those to you first thing tomorrow by noon. I've got to put my hands on the public safety needs analysis. I don't know, Rob, if you've got that.
So Council, over the next couple of weeks, if we need to schedule another special meeting that's just for this, because sometimes if it's on a work session with a lot of items, it gets, it gets lost in the discussion. So the do out of this is that you'll send the reports, the studies, and that we'll look over it, and then we will be ready for a further discussion in an upcoming meeting. Council, any other questions for the manager, Mr. Tolan?
One, one thing that would be helpful, I think what I'm hearing as well, as we work with our bond council, to at least set the framework for May ninth, depending on what numbers you use. I think we're hearing that there is a public safety piece and an infrastructure question as well. Was there a desire to look at other questions? I know at one time there was talk about housing or.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 that's a great point, I'm glad you brought it up, because I didn't see that in the presentation. We also did a housing study, we know we're, we're short twenty thousand houses here with workforce level housing, so for sure.
And Mayor, just as a reminder as well, with the ARPA money, how much did we set aside for that?
I believe it's four, right?
Four?
So, I don't know if you can build twenty thousand anything with four million dollars.
For the housing trust fund?
All right.
Yes.
All right, Mayor Protemin and Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager, when we did the Parks and Rec bond, and that we took it to the voters, if I do recall, and I think I'm ahead of the game here, but when we decided to do it, to bring, take it to the voters to decide whether they wanted this, did we not do a survey of some sort? I remember when we were picking out, trying to figure out, because my understanding before I came on council, the Parks and Rec bond was up to like eighty million, and we brought it down to thirty-five million, but we did some type of survey for our residents, that they said, we want this, we want this, we want this, that.
I think you are correct, that actually predates my return back to Fayetteville, but I do recall that it received, it was what allowed the council to identify the various areas in which people had favorability, and I'm not sure if that was done by the city.
If I recall, we had some meetings, and, but they had called in and did a survey, so the Parks and Rec things that we picked was that the citizens were the ones telling us, and I'm sure Michael can remember a lot better than I can at this time, but I think we need to put that into if we wanted to bring this to the voters to decide, thank you.
All right, Councilman Hare?
Have we, Mayor, or?
Microphone, sir.
Have we set a priority on, priorities on that rescue funding money, I know from the small groups, is that something to discuss in the budget season?
For, council has given the nod for how the ARPA money, the first tranche would be used, we can definitely come back as part of the budget work session and talk about that, or we can also email that out with, to you guys tomorrow as well, the, kind of the areas that you had already considered for that.
Okay, yeah, that's, yes, email would be good, but I would like to hear that, apparently hear that beginning.
Yes, sir, it was a couple of meetings back.
Yeah, and we had it feathered in in the CIP, TIP, the second tranche.
Yes.
All right, and, and council, remember to use your mics, because the video, I know we're getting used to this being broadcast, but they're speaking of that. Okay, so, council, I don't think we have any other questions, we know what the goals are.
Can we get the types or not?
I think that the two that we heard.
Yeah, council, I want to make sure housing is a part of that, so I know that's a critical part to P for P and everything, so show of hands of that has been a subject matter, all right. Councilman Jones, you okay with housing? Can you give thumbs? Okay, all right, all right.
And then, then public safety and infrastructure too, so it'll be three types?
So it'll be three, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
All right, but now, now, we can figure that if we need to have a meeting before May ninth, you're just saying by May ninth, you need the categories, correct?
Yeah, I would like to give bond council the time, they won't fill in the numbers or anything, and then if we come back and say, no, I don't want to do public safety, we can take that out too.
Also, what I, what I would say, there was a couple of questions asked tonight that we didn't have answers for, that we need to, we need to be prepared to have that. One is, of course, how much has been funded and how much is remaining, and what's in the CIP programmed and funded for these, any projects that fit under these three categories? So in other words, if we have money programmed out for, for years, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's been baked into the CIP, if a bond comes with its own source of revenue, what projects come off so that the council can get a clear visual as to what's remaining, you know? The remainder of those plans that we've executed, they're gonna send the plans, but to say that we've already funded fifty or sixty percent of the bike plan done in twenty eighteen, you know, that would be helpful. And also too, one of the issues we had in, in, in the Parks and Rec bond was that the projects we used as a basis were done in a Parks and Rec study that was done ten years before that. So the city had changed and things had changed, so are the projects that are in these studies current, you know what I mean? So have we had growth in areas we didn't expect, are there different gaps than the safety plan? So those are some of the kind of things that we probably need to have. We don't have a long timeframe that you need something from us, but just trying to give you some heads up as to the kind of things we need to make a decision. Council, anything other than that?
A part of that, Mr. Mayor?
A part of that is also the price of, of material that you had mentioned, city manager, so if we're looking at a four-year stretch before we can get to that fourth project, will there be an estimated increase in cost, and how do we estimate that cost based upon, you know, the cost of, of living and materials at that time? How would you go about estimating if you borrow a hundred million, then we can, we can do ten projects, twenty projects, but after four years, we have to take two or three or four projects off the plate? How do we balance that?
I would propose, sir, we'd probably do it just as you just articulated, we would have to prioritize, let's say for instance, the fire stations which were listed. There are a couple of obligations in that we have made to extend fire service and the city's limits up Bramble Street, I think to Elliott Bridge Road. So we also have had a desire and a need to try to put a station over in the Cedar Creek area, but some of the stations, as the mayor mentioned, that we currently have, have significant renovation needs that we need to address, particularly for male and female firefighters. And so what we would do if council prioritizes and says, okay, of the, how many other percentage we dedicate to fire, we would sit down with the fire department and Rob Stone, who's in our construction management unit, and we would do the first ones first, and we would also take a look to at which ones we would have to have additional support for. One of the things that took us so long, as you all recall, with the Parks and Recreation Bond projects, was that we had to cite those. We didn't have a location for the sports complex, that was, I mean, that was multiple years. We didn't have a location identified hard and fast for the senior centers, and it took us, we took time to negotiate and work with all of our partners for that. We hadn't even planned on doing a, the Jordan Soccer Complex as it was, but it was a wonderful addition to what we already had. But your, your question really is almost the answer, we would have to do, as you said, prioritize those first projects first, look at the ones where we anticipate that there would be the greatest variability in the future for cost, and try to address those as well. Rob, I don't know if you have a percentage that you're hearing in the industry of how prices, the construction prices and materials are going up on a, on a monthly or annual basis, but it is a real concern, and that's also something I said we'll be bringing back to you, and just a moment, Jay, if you could tell them what we need on Fire Station Four as well before you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just what city manager mentioned earlier, we've, we're seeing a thirty percent increase from what our estimates were a year ago. I mean, it's thirty percent, it's, it's, it's pretty aggressive right now, plus, we're seeing a lot of supply chain issues, it's hard to get the materials you need, so that's stretching out, and anytime you stretch projects out, they go up in cost, as well as labor, we're having labor issues with some of our crews, to get enough crews to work, so.
And if you build that into a contingency?
Yes, sir, and we do have contingencies in these plans built in, but of course, we're not looking at thirty percent contingencies by any stretch, so, but as we said before, as we see these trends, we will make sure that's included as we update these costs.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Mr. Manager, talk about this management cost, is it one point seven five million or twenty-five million for management cost?
One point seven five, twenty-five's the total of the whole slide.
So to manage this section, if it were twenty-five million worth of projects approved, would be approximately one point seven five?
That's correct.
Kyla Byron or Rob, could you expound on that?
Roughly that one point seven five equates to seven percent of the amount, so that's seven percent of twenty-five million for the infrastructure piece would be project management, design, that's soft cost portion of front end.
And we also charge back construction management's costs to the projects which they serve as project managers for.
If you said four years, they would assume the four years delivery, that means projects of four years for bulk of the project.
Those are for the infrastructure ones, so I think, Sheila, did you have anything else to add on that, or was it already said, it's okay?
No, I believe that that's the cost for us to do it in-house, correct?
Yeah, those are the costs for us to do it in-house, so we would hire the staff to manage those projects, and the staff will stay on the books post those projects. And so that, that cost you're looking at is actually a reduced price for managing it in-house. If you were to outsource it, it would be even more. So if we were to do more than twenty-five million dollars worth of work, we would probably get a program manager to help us with the additional twenty-five million, let's say you did fifty million worth of infrastructure projects, we would get a project manager to help us for the remaining twenty-five.
So because we're doing it in-house, that's a stable number, will that number increase as the years go by, or will we have a stable amount that we know that we're gonna be dealing with because we're doing it in-house?
Right.
Because you're saying that it's gonna go higher if we're doing outside?
Yeah, if you add, right, so we believe that we have the capacity to handle around twenty-five million dollars worth of work, and we would need to hire a certain number of staff to do that, and that dollar fee that we've given you is what we think we would need to hire the staff to do that. Now, in terms of what you would have to consider is that that staff would stay on board once those projects are done, correct? So that would be a continuation of those salaries post this period, but the advantage is that you would then have that staff to take on additional work for sidewalks and roadways and so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, any other questions? Most to adjourn, we'll look for that information pretty soon, Mr. Manager. All right.
Still adjourned. Can I talk a moment?
Absolutely.